It's now about 9:02 a.m. I'd like to welcome everyone to our special call meeting of Monday, March 30th, 2020. To open this morning, I've asked Commissioner Gamble to do our prayer and our pledge. If everyone will please stand.
You by your head. The heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for allowing us to gather here to do the county's business. The Lord, we ask that you just be with our country, our state, and our county as we go through these difficult times. Be with the military, the first responders, and the medical first responders that are dealing with this crisis. We ask of your wisdom and your guidance, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this morning is approval of amendments from our March 24th, 2020 meeting. Do I have any corrections or comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving right along to the consent agenda, items 2, 3, 4. Do I have anything wishing to be pulled for a comment, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming, a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number five. At this time, basically, we're going to open discussion with the board, and we have some folks here from the public about the crisis that we're dealing with. To start with this morning, I think I would like to ask Mr. Kerry Waldron with the Health Department to come forward, and he's going to give us an update from his office.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you and to provide you with some information relative to COVID-19. First and foremost, I would like to acknowledge the staff at the Department of Health here in Swanee County. As you can imagine, the last two weeks have been a whirlwind with activity, and our staff is by far doing an exceptional job, working long hours, meeting the demands and needs of the public, and I just want to give them a special tribute for the efforts that they do. As we continue to move forward with COVID-19, our efforts will certainly increase and just certainly appreciate all that they're doing. I have also with me our Director of Nursing, Ms. Cindy Morgan. If there are some technical questions that you have that I can't answer, I know that she can. I'd like to start out by giving you statewide, and then as we go forward, I will narrow the comments down to what's specific to Swanee County. But as of last evening, and these numbers are ever-changing because once the tests that are performed in the state labs and private labs hit the database, the numbers are updating. But as of last night, and we'll see a new, by 11 o'clock this morning, we'll have a new round set of numbers that will be coming out. But last night, there have been 4,950 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the state of Florida. We've had 60 deaths so far in the state of Florida. The counties with the highest number of confirmed cases are Dade and Broward County, and they equal 51% of that total number. Then they're followed by Palm Beach, Orange, Hillsborough, Lee, and Duval County, which are 24% of all confirmed cases. To date, Swanee County has two confirmed cases. We had a confirmed case yesterday evening. It is a healthcare worker in a local... I think my book's hit the microphone there. Sorry about that. It is in a healthcare facility here in Swanee County. I would like to advise you, as of this morning, we've gotten our third positive case. It is a case that is a close contact of our number-two case. They actually live in the same household. So Jamie, we'll be issuing a press release this morning relative to that case. As far as the ages, it used to be the majority of the cases were in the 55-plus population, but we're seeing a shift somewhat in that. Right now, 30% of the cases are between the ages of 15 and 54 years old. 43% of the cases still are within the 55 to 84-year-old, but we are seeing an increase in 15 to 24 years of age with 383 cases. The good thing, bright side, is that in zero to four years, there's only 13 cases. So we're seeing that the young folks are somewhat resilient to this strand of virus. And in the 5- to 14-year-olds, there's only 29 cases. So we hope that this continues to trend to where our young people are not getting that, but we still have concern with those, basically, 25 years and older. They're beginning to marginalize and equal themselves out. Males are 53% of all cases, and females are 43% of all cases. There is concern in our nursing care facilities. There are 62 confirmed cases in the state, with Broward and Duval leading with a number of folks that have COVID-19 that are in the nursing home. So far in Swanee County, we've had 64 people that have gone through and been sampled and that are tested. Of those two were positive, and we're about to have a third confirmed case. We are waiting on results back from the lab on eight cases. The third case is going to be a 64-year-old female. A lot of folks think they may have COVID, but we are in the flu season and we are in allergy season. A lot of the symptoms are very similar to COVID. If you are sick, stay home. Please practice proper hygiene, which we should have been doing our whole life, but now it's more emphasized. Wash your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If you don't have access to soap and water, keep a little bottle of hand sanitizer in your pocket, and use hand sanitizers. If you are sick, stay home. Also, practice social distancing. If you're in groups, need to be in groups of 10 or less and at least six feet apart. That goes for both public and private gatherings. Surfaces, you need to wipe them down on a frequent basis. Those surfaces that are high-touch areas, such as countertops, door handles, light switches, keypads, things that, you know, folks come in constant contact with, we need to do, increase our cleaning efforts. We've had a great relationship and continue to have a great relationship with our community partners. We meet frequently and talk often, don't we, Sharon? We've been meeting with the EOC, the Sheriff's Office, the Live Oak PD, fire and rescue for both city and county. We've been meeting with the school system, our nursing facilities, our hospitals, as well as communications with our local healthcare providers, our doctors' offices. When we have someone that is screened or their specimen is collected and they meet the criteria for testing and that test is sent to the lab for confirmation, we immediately notify the EOC, who makes the notation in the E911 system, so that law enforcement and fire and rescue, if they have to respond to that address, they know to take extra precaution. Once we have received the information back that it's a negative, then we remove that address from the system. And so far, out of all those that we have tested, we've had 54 negatives. So that's the bright side, that we're getting back more negatives than we are positive, and we certainly hope that that continues. I know that when we do have a confirmation of a case, I contact Mr. Harris to make him aware. He, in turn, then contacts the board. I want to make sure that I don't have to call him very often, because I think when he sees my number pop up, he might be hesitant to want to answer it now, but I do communicate with him to let him know, and we try to get that information out to you before we release it to the media. But just as soon as we have confirmation and we have press releases ready to go to notify the public. Also, from the Health Department, we are still open. We're still providing core services, and those core services are family planning, vital statistics, WIC, which is Women, Infant, and Children, immunizations, environmental health services, continue to go on. We have modified our dental clinic. As you recall, we see kids from the age of 0 to 20 who are on Medicaid. We are only now performing emergent care services. That is something that involves swelling, pain, inflammation. We have it scheduled to where we see those on a specific day during the week. That's just to limit the amount of folks that come into the Health Department. We have set up staff that will start screening anyone that comes into the Health Department to discuss with them their symptoms, their signs, and also their fever. We do not want to put anybody at risk, and so we are screening those that do come into the Health Department. For screening priorities, it is if you're 65 years of age or older with symptoms, or if you're someone that has medical conditions existing or underlying medical conditions that you might be immunocompromised, also, and healthcare workers with symptoms. They are the priorities that can receive a specimen collection that can be sent to the state lab. State lab is turning around the results within 24 to 48 hours. Private labs are taking longer than that. It could be as long as six days from the private labs. But based upon the screening algorithm for those that are 65 or older with symptoms, someone that's got an underlying medical condition, or healthcare providers, workers with symptoms, we can test, or we can screen, and we can send those to the state lab for testing. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah. Before we start, excuse me, before we start with questions I'm going to let the board ask, we have a lot of folks that's visiting or watching via video, and I asked that everybody pulls their microphones close. And last week, we had some conversation with different folks in the audience. If we speak today, we're going to come to the microphone because the video doesn't pick that up. So I just want to clarify that. Moving forward, have some questions for Mr. Waldron from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple.
Mr. Wish.
What is the protocol on getting a test? I've had some people question recently about having gone to the doctor, been referred to the emergency room, and told at the emergency room, "You've got a cold, go home," and would not test them at all. So when we have a... My big concern are the most vulnerable. And I have an 83-year-old father who has underlying heart issues. So if he starts showing symptoms of something, where should he, what would be the easiest route for him to get a test?
Well, first, the...
At least get qualified for a test.
The COVID-19 is not a, everybody gets tested.
Yes.
So we want to first make sure that folks are aware. Not everybody needs to get tested. You can go to your local primary care provider. Doctors can make the assessment. They can go through the screening process, and if they determine that you meet the criteria, they can do the screening, the specimen, and have that sent off. Most of the doctors in our community are providing that service. Some have not. And we have met with all of them and had discussions with all of them about them providing that service. If not, those can go to the emergency room. They'll go through a screening process as well to determine if they qualify. Or, in this circumstance, they can call the Health Department, and we'll go through a screening process, and if they meet those criteria of being 65 or older with symptoms, of having underlying medical conditions, or being a healthcare provider, we can provide the sampling and have that shipped to the state lab. So in your case, if he's meeting symptoms, then yes, he needs to be seen by either his primary care physician, or if it's just those symptoms, and then he can present at the Health Department, more than likely that we could go through the criteria and he would be screened. But just because, again, if you've got symptoms, you know, flu season is here, and it's been confusing somewhat to some people because they've been sick or have gotten sick, and it turns out to be that all of these cases of the 54, you know, it's not COVID. Most have been identified as having flulike symptoms and having the flu. The onset of symptoms is between two days and 14 days. So you could rock along for a while and feel fine, and then, you know, boom, wind up having some of the symptoms. But two to 14 days is the incubation period.
Just as a record, he doesn't have symptoms, so...
Very good.
Thank God. The second thing...
Excuse me, but I would say, you know, the governor and the state surgeon general, if you are over the age of 65, they are recommending that you stay home, that you stay indoors, do not travel, do not go out in a socialized environment, be very, you know, maintain awareness of your presence so that you can limit your exposure to anyone being sick, not just COVID, but being sick.
The second question I have, first to the sharing of information, that's protected information or HIPAA. Are we, or is there a way, considering that this is all kind of overseen by the CDC and the protocols and such, so when someone gets tested positive and CDC comes in and does their investigation, they ask the questions, where you been, were you traveling, who you talking to, and stuff like that? If they, if they pinpoint a hotspot where we seem to, or a possibility of a place where there's a lot of exposure, person works in a certain facility or something, are our medical first responders able to get that information as well before they go out there and respond to a necessary call, but not necessarily a COVID-19 issue, so that they're protected?
Well, when we have anyone that is sampled and their test is sent to the state lab, I contact the EOC, who responds to 911, to note that record of that address.
That address, but I'm talking about...
That's correct. We have no hotspots in Swanee County, none whatsoever. And as part of, you know, you're saying the CDC does all the contact tracing. The local Health Department is doing the contact tracing here for anyone that has been screened, and if a positive comes back, we have to interview them, contact everyone that they've been in contact with in the last, well, since the onset of symptoms. Sometimes it could be as little as three days ago or as far away as three weeks ago. So we start our process of where you been, who have you talked to, where have you traveled to, just to determine how may you have gotten this. And so far, we have no hotspots identified at all in Swanee County. But if there's a case where there is a hotspot or an area that has a greater number of folks that have tested positive, we would absolutely notify EOC so that our first responders would know in advance if they were to happen to respond to that area.
And the reason, and I won't go into specific details, but the reason why is because if we had a person who was medical staff, essential medical staff at a particular facility who's been carrying around this virus for, you know, undetermined number of days before they actually started getting the symptoms, do our folks know that where they worked, that particular place may be a spot where you want to take extra precautions on when responding out there? I mean, it's, sharing that information, I know, under HIPAA guidelines is limited.
We have to be very, very careful because of HIPAA restrictions. But again, if we do see a hotspot, EOC would be notified so that it could be flagged in the E911 system.
Okay.
And these medical facilities, where there may or may not be a case, we immediately work directly with their administration and with their staff. You know, the nursing homes are licensed through the Agency for Healthcare Administration, which is referred to as ACHA. They've got very stringent requirements on them for what they have to do from the standpoint. They have to check the temperature of their employees before they come to work and when they leave for work. They have to monitor their symptoms as well as their residents. They're checking their temperature several times a day, observing them for any type of symptoms. And at any point that a nursing facility suspects someone is ill and they transport them out of that nursing home facility, the Health Department has to be notified, and we immediately contact the State Emergency Operations Center, and it goes into their database, and it puts this facility on alert so that we can track and monitor. Because what the governor and the state surgeon general do not want is rapid spread of illness in a confined nursing home facility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. Chair.
To answer that one question, Ronnie, is that when, just like when Mr. Kerry was saying, is that the information, you know, any type of testing or positive, it goes to Sharon. Sharon then notifies our dispatch and then through our smart cop system, you know, when the, if the deputies get a call, they'll show up on their computer screens that there is, this is a concern as far as either a possible or a positive. So all our deputies, you know, because it shows up on their smart cop screens in the cars, and then plus a dispatch sees it. So all that's put out to, actually, all our folks and also all to the fire rescue. So all that's covered, and we're aware of it. And like I said, they did a very good job of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
More questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleming.
The question that I have, since the closure of the hospital, you say if a patient, an individual got, had the feeling sick over through the night, what are y'all hours? Is it at 5:00 or are you all extending y'all hours?
Well, the hospital's not closed. They're still open, and they're still running emergency care procedures. But at the Health Department, we are open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5:00. We do not provide primary care. If you recall, several years ago, prior to my arrival, the Health Department financially could not continue to afford providing primary care, and so that, those services ceased. But we are open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5:00. Yesterday, several of us went in and worked for about five hours dealing with our community and our cases to stay on top of it, to alert everyone. So for right now, we are open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5:00.
As of 6:00 this morning, the state, our facilities are letting the trucks roll, but the cars, they're pulling all the cars in and turn them around, but they're out of the state of Florida.
A lot of state agencies are practicing telework, and they have not allowed the public into their facilities just to help contain the spread of COVID. The Health Department is one of those state agencies at the local level that we are open for business. We are still serving folks, and we're still seeing folks. Yes, we are doing this in a very methodical and practical method because we want to protect our staff, because we're a small staff, and the last I need is for all of my nurses to come down sick and then have to be quarantined for 14 days. So we're practicing all the proper and appropriate medical care and precautions that we can. But while a lot of state agencies are functioning by telephone and email, we're actually, our doors are open. We do ask, though, if someone feels like they are sick and need to be screened, we ask them, "Don't show up. Please call us." We can do a lot of this information gathering over the telephone and potentially save you a trip. And if it's someone that we feel like warrants testing, that meets the criteria, we have a protocol in place. We bring them to a designated area. Our team suits up and puts on the preventive protective equipment. We go outside to an area, and we provide that service to them. So that limits the folks, not, they don't have to get out of their car. That protects the rest of our staff and folks in our facility, but our staff is geared up and taking the proper precautions. So we've got a real good protocol in place that's working quite well.
Okay. When you say protocol, what about the three cases that's pending, the three cases that now, that are now? How would the community be aware of the individuals, or y'all, they isolated, have them isolated?
Oh, absolutely. In all cases of the two, because the third one has, we've gotten confirmation, we're just waiting for the state lab to verify it in writing, they're at home, they're isolated. We have gone through with them, what all precautions they have to take, and they're isolated, they're not going anywhere, they're on quarantine for a minimum of 14 days, and there is a process that we go through with them before they can return to work.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hale.
You mentioned the tele...
Telework.
Telework. Are you guys doing that? You didn't really follow...
We are not.
You are not.
Because I have, I have very few employees that could telework.
Okay.
All of our folks are critical folks, and because we are a small number of employees at the Health Department, we also have, you recall, we have the school, a part of our team is school health, so we're repurposing those positions to bring them into the Health Department, to help screen individuals that are coming in the door and working our telephones and answering questions. So I do not have employees that could telework.
Do we know how many physicians may be doing that, and which ones are available? Do you have a...
I do not. Right now, and Ms. Morgan, correct me if I'm wrong, all of the physicians at this point are still open and seeing patients.
Okay. All right. And real quick, the test that you talked about, you said there was, you did discuss the turnaround time on it. Do we have enough tests for Swanee County?
Well, they're not tests, they're sample collection kits.
Okay. All right.
Because what you do is you collect a sample, and that is sent to the state lab and the state lab tests. Right now, we have adequate, but we have requested more. I think we had a shipment in last week.
Okay.
But right now, for Swanee County, we have adequate kits. But we, you know, we can put in a request through DOH for more. As you may know, the priority area for equipment, personal protective equipment and for kits are going to South Florida, because they, that's where you're seeing the highest number of cases. But right now, we are sufficient with our testing kit.
But we are not equipped to test the whole county.
Yeah. As Ms. Morgan said, we are not equipped to test the whole county, and as I previously stated, this is not, everybody needs to get tested or everybody will be tested. We have to be very practical in our approach, and we are following the criteria whereby people would be tested.
Who wouldn't need any more testing, but...
I do too.
I agree. Any other questions for Mr. Waldron at this time?
Just one. You mentioned medical personnel. You gave a number of the cases, positive cases, that are medical personnel across the state. Could you repeat that number?
No, not of medical personnel. I just gave you a total number of cases, was 4,950.
Okay. I thought you had mentioned, I'm sorry. It seemed like you had mentioned something about it.
And now, I will refer you to our website, the Florida Department of Health, floridahealth.gov. There is a dashboard, and on that dashboard, it is updated frequently by county, the number of positive cases, the number of cases that are, that have been screened, the number of cases that are pending. So it gives you a lot of detailed information. It also gives you the breakdown of the counties, which counties, and whatever county has, case-wise. Also, it breaks down the ages, so you can see what ages are most impacted by that. So I would encourage you to continually review the cdc.gov website and the floridahealth.gov website so that you can stay up to date on the most current information. And at any time you have a question, please do not hesitate to give me a call. Again, I communicate with Mr. Harris. It saves time on our end so that we can communicate with him, and he can contact all the commissioners. I mean, I'd be happy to contact you directly, but it would tie us up quite a bit. So I hope, Mr. Harris, you don't mind me just calling you with the information.
That's fine.
And for public knowledge, I think, I appreciate you saying that, because we get a lot of, you know, emails and concerns and where they can find that information. I think Ms. Henson does a good job, Sheriff's Department does a good job of posting that and you guys do too, but if you want the public to know, that's where they can find out.
Well, Ms. Henson and I, we talk almost hourly, it seems like, but we do meet with our community partners at the EOC. We keep them fully informed of what's going on and how best to respond and how to protect themselves, and we will continue to do that. I would just like to remind you that I'm also the Health Officer in Lafayette County, so I am dealing with two counties as well as Ms. Morgan and a couple of our staff. So we do share our services back and forth, and currently Lafayette County has zero confirmed cases.
Mr. Waldron, I got, Commissioner Fleming has one more question.
Sure.
Okay. I want to be straight up. Of the confirmed cases that we already have in this county, the individuals, the people that they have been around previously before they were confirmed, how has that been handled?
We do contact tracing, and we ask them, "Who all have you been around? What's been the close contact? What has been your relationship with those individuals?" And then, if they feel like they have been in close contact, we call them, we follow up and ask these questions. But if they're, they don't have symptoms, then they are not going to be screened. You've got to be symptomatic, and what I mean by that, you've got to be displaying fever, cough, shortness of breath, and if you've got underlying medical conditions, let's say heart disease, diabetes, cancer, or are being treated for some other condition, we need to know that, because if your immune system is low, then that could be an indication that you might be a good candidate for testing. So we screen, we talk. Matter of fact, this morning, waiting, we've already been dealing with folks from our second case. So our team is actively on this, trying to do the contact tracing, and we've also been working with this employee's employer yesterday, so they're on top of it. We've also contacted all the appropriate state authorities. They're aware of our circumstances, so we're trying to stay ahead of this issue.
Mr. Waldron, I really appreciate your update this morning. I think it's been, I've learned some things that I didn't know, and also, as we move forward, we're meeting at least once a week, and I would like to ask you to provide us an update once a week as we move forward at our meeting, because I just... Because I, I just, if you're able to do that, I feel like it, it goes out to a lot of folks via video. We have the newspaper here. You're getting, we're getting the word out by doing that and, uh.
Be more than happy to provide you updates and again, uh, if I'm available, I'll, I'll try my best to make myself available. But, uh, you should, certainly you can understand as we move forward. I'm hoping that this is all the cases that we have.
Absolutely. And, uh, we appreciate you and we may have a few more questions for you later, but thank you.
Sure. I'll, I'll be happy to hang around.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, Ms. Henson, I'd like for you to come up and if you have anything from your side you'd like to add to it this morning, we'd be grateful.
Alright, thank you. First of all, I would like to give accolades, um, to Kerry and to Cindy and all of their staff. They're doing a fabulous job communicating with our office so we can then communicate with you guys. Um, we continue to be on conference calls every day, seven days a week with the state. As we receive the reports, we disseminate them to all of our stakeholders. Um, we are also now on conference calls three times a week with our region, our region coordinator. Matter of fact, he's on his way to our EOC right now. And we continue, uh, actually today, we'll be on applicant briefing with the state in reference to the FEMA application, cause the entire state has been approved. So, um, we'll be on that today, so we can be sure and get the latest information. So when it comes time for requesting reimbursements, we can do that. Um, our office has been placing orders through Web EOC, which is the portal that we use. And Joyce has been able to deliver PPE equipment and I'm glad of this. Um, we have not been able to get everything that we've requested and we realize that that's because the counties that are heavily impacted are getting the majority of the PPE equipment. But we're proud to say that we have been able to deliver equipment to Advent Christian Village, Surrey Place, Swanee Healthcare, Rising Oaks, schools, fire rescue. Um, we're just thankful for what equipment we have gotten from the state. And, um, once again, we're working with all of our partners. We're meeting once a week with the Department of Health, Fire Rescue, um, city, fire, city, um, police department, anybody that basically has a stake in all of this and needs to know the information. We're meeting with them every week.
Thank you so much. Do I have any questions for Ms. Henson?
Alright, anytime you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the board about what we've talked about so far?
Not so far.
No, sure.
Appreciate all their hard work and information, for sure.
I know I see some folks here from the public. Uh, do I have any questions, comment from anybody that'd like to speak up to this point on anything? Welcome. Just name and address for the record.
Ricky Allen. I live at 1319 Goodman Street. Uh, my question is, I watched our great Governor DeSantis this morning. He said that the places that are less affected, that he would like to keep operating as normal, to do less economic impact on that community. Does anybody here disagree that we are in the lesser, lesser impacted area?
Nice.
Okay. I watched Donald Trump. He said the same exact thing. At what point does it become the people's choice on what they go do? I understand precautions. Believe me, I'm all about them. I want everybody to be safe. I don't even want a 24 hour virus. So I, I completely understand. But at what point do we have a choice and an option here? And if you close us down now, we're actually, what, three people? What's the percentage of that? How many people we got in Swanee County? Forty, forty-four? Forty-four thousand. Three people have us, so we're less impacted now. So our economy's still doing okay, but if you go shutting things down, things are gonna change. If you shut it down three weeks ahead of time, what are you gonna do when it does become bad? If, which I, I seriously doubt it will, if it did become bad, now you've put people out of work for three or four weeks extra. So what's, what's your, uh, plan for that?
Uh, I mean, maybe you're, you have some information that?
Well, I heard they're, they're talking about shutting down hair salons and that is people that work in our economy. But that's, that's the reason I'm here. Am I wrong?
Or not?
Uh, they're shutting down hair salons and nail salons. I'm asking, am I wrong? That's the reason I came down here today.
I don't know that, I mean, I think all businesses are open for discussion. I don't know that any one business is being pointed out.
Okay, well, I have, I have been either misinformed or ill-informed, whatever, but.
Well, there's, it's, there's a lot going on in, in the, in the world, so to speak, not in Swanee County.
Oh, yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
But, uh.
But sometimes, just like our great President Donald Trump said, the cure could be worse than the virus itself. The economic impact could be great if things don't stay halfway running. We're already destroying the restaurant industry to a certain extent. People are hurting right now. They're gonna hurt worse three, four weeks down the road. We got waitresses and I know you guys can't do nothing about that. That's, that's the governor that decided to do that. But you guys have an impact on this too, so I wanna come up and say my piece. I'll leave you guys to answer whatever you wanna answer. I appreciate it.
And that's fine and you'll be able to comment again as we move forward if you need to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So I, I know the, the, from the federal government, they've listed, uh, those types of, uh, businesses. But, uh, they've also provided the states with the opportunity to make those, uh, choices within the states, uh, as well as local government. So we're just listening basically to state, federal, uh, guidelines on it at this point and, and, and going, uh, with that. And I don't think, uh, Governor DeSantis has, has come, has come down specifically on specific, uh, uh, types of businesses. The only one that we dealt with was the internet cafes.
What, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I could just, I'd like to comment on that.
Yes, sir.
Um, the question for you is, do you have a crystal ball? That's the question. Do you have a crystal ball? Now, if all of you can admit that you don't, then it might be best that we just kinda reflect on the experience that others have already have, um, which isn't good. I've been listening to the President and all of his experts and I've listened to the Governor. And they all recognize that there are a lot of communities that are just simply not as affected today. That's what every one of them are saying. So today, we aren't as impacted as some of the others. But I've also recognized that in areas that are affected, that they've got some experience now and how quickly these things can double. And I hope that that doesn't happen here. That would be my hope, that it doesn't double like it does in these other communities that already have documented experience. But let me just share with you what that would look like right here, if that were to occur. I mean, every one of you have been watching the television news and you look at those cases. They start out, most of them have, before they got very, very aggressive in trying to minimize that curve, flatten the curve. And every one of them were doubling every two days. And then they took real aggressive measures and finally got it where it was doubling every three days and every four days thereafter. But if you just take a look at where we are today, let's say that we've got two confirmed cases. If you double that number every two days for two weeks, we would have 256 cases, two weeks from now. I hope that doesn't happen. I hope we don't have any more cases, period. That's my hope. If I use the number that Mr. Waldron used though, and said, we've got three confirmed cases right now and you double that for the next two weeks, you end up with 384 cases. Just doubling it. Every two days.
Aye.
So you've been asked to look into the crystal ball. And probably the most important thing that I heard today was that we're gonna meet at least every week and we might have to meet more frequently than that. Because there, there are the political pressures to do nothing and no one believes that we should do nothing. There's the political pressure that says, let's not crush the economy. No one wants to crush the economy. There's the political pressure that, like most of us, have a philosophy that government is just too strong armed and wants to get in the middle of all of our business and that we should just be free to do anything that we wanna do. And I agree with that. That's, that's me. I think we should all be able to do anything that we wanna do and just use our own discernment. But unfortunately, we're in a situation where at some point, at some point, some tough decisions are gonna have to be made by people that sit in positions to make tough decisions that affect a community that they're trying to help long-term. And today might, may not be the day. But next week may be, or the week after that, or the week after that. Because we all recognize that there are some businesses out there today that provide zero distance separation, that are hands-on businesses. That's just the reality of it. And they exist all over the state and all over the country. It's not unique to this county. That's just the way that it is. And I hope that we don't ever come to the day where we have to have a quarantine on the entire community. But there are communities talking about that today. Why? Because they're two to three weeks ahead of us and they don't like what they've been experiencing. So commissioners, I commend you for sitting in those seats. I'm glad that I'm not in that seat today. But you've been asked to look into the crystal ball and it's impossible to do. Um, I would just encourage everyone to continue to observe what's happening in other communities that are two and three weeks ahead of us. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'm, I'm the first to admit, we're sitting up here in a, in something that we've never seen before. And there is some tough decisions that had to be made moving forward. Now, I will say this. I don't wanna see any business shut down. I didn't wanna see the restaurants shut down to where you couldn't go and eat. But as leaders of a county, we have to look out for the best interests of everyone, not just a couple. And moving forward, I do not wanna, I do not wanna leave here today and, and say that we're shutting any business down. What I would like to say is if there's businesses out there that do come in close contact with folks, whether it be hair salons or nail salons or many other businesses, it's not just those, I would like them, to the best of their ability, to be safe about doing it. And I can't tell you what next week holds. What I can tell you is, if we leave here today and we don't have any of those things and we ask you to do, be as safe as you can when you're doing this, the government may come out this week and if he comes out this week and, and says non-essential business, then we don't have any say-so, period. Or if we come back next week, can I sit here and look anybody in the eye right now? If we come back next week and we got 10 or 20 cases in Swanee County, can I honestly tell you today that I will not look for the best interest of the people and say that we may have to do non-essential? I can't tell you that today. I can tell you that next week. Because at that point in time, if it starts doubling, like I see it happen in some places, we have to make tough decisions and be the bad guys. And, and if I gotta do that to save lives, that's just what I have to do. Now, what I would like to do today, and I'd like this board to consider, and I'm no different than anybody else up here. I get one vote. But I would like to leave here today with a social distancing order in place that's solid, that is enforced by the sheriff and the city, police, that if we have groups of people that's gathered up, that doesn't need to be, that we ask them politely to disperse in the safety of, of this county. Now, a social distancing order is not preventing people from carrying on business. It's, it's there in place to ask you to be respectful of everyone, safety not just yours. I would seriously like the board to consider that and I would like to entrust our law enforcement to follow through with it. With the day, today, the way social media works, our law enforcement can pull up to one, one group of people and, and ask them politely, and I'm not saying to be disrespectful to anybody and tell anybody you're taking someone to jail. I'm saying ask that group that, on the side of a caution and the interest of this county, that you don't be as in close a contact as what you are. That's, that's what I would like to see today. I just feel like, in the interest of the people of this county, that we got to, we have to do something. And if we're gonna sit here and just not do anything, we're not doing our job. Now, I understand it puts this board in a bad position. It makes you make decisions that you don't wanna make. And trust me, as I've already said, I don't wanna see any business shut down. I mean, it, it hits very close to home to me. I mean, my, my daughter is a server at a restaurant that's been closed down except drive-through only. And also, within the last six months, she just got her license to be a hairstylist. So that's two businesses right there. And that's my daughter. I don't, I mean, it doesn't get any closer to me than that and you know, it, it's, it's tough. And I don't wanna put her out of business to where she can't make any income and help take care of herself and, and what she's got on, going on in her life. But with that being said, I have to be very courteous and respectful to the people of this county. And I don't just represent District Four. I represent all the people as each one of us does up here. We don't just vote for one district. We was elected by that one district, but we represent everybody. We answer to everybody. So I would, with that being said, I would just like to ask the board to consider that as we move forward through these talks. And I'm sure there's other people out here this morning that would like to be heard and I want you to be heard. That's what we're here for. We're not here to, to create chaos and uproar. We're here to come up with creative solutions as a community. And it takes input, just like it did from Mr. Allen, just like it does from Mr. Waldron. You take all those things and you put them together and you try to come up with what's the best interest of the people. Uh, do I have any comment on that? If not, I'm gonna move on to something.
The only thing I'd say, and I think Mr. Harris touched on it, I think, um, just following suit with what you're suggesting this board do, some of the other counties, Mr. Harris, that have had multiple cases, much larger numbers than ours. I think just looking as to what they were doing would be smart for us, seeing what protocols they're following, so.
But the question is, is what they're doing working?
Yeah.
I've, I've seen several places that have, have shut down. It, it still seems to be growing. Uh, that's the question. It's where do you find that balance?
Yeah, I don't know if it's shutting down or more so just limiting the number of, of patrons, you know. I, I give you an example, Valdosta and Jacksonville, I know those two areas are, say your, your Home Depots, your Loews, things like that. They're only letting so many people in at a time and as people come out, let that more in. I don't know that we're doing that here. Just trying to limit that amount of social distancing.
I mean, I, I think that's what, that's, I, I just think that's the first step for us, is it doesn't matter if you're in the grocery store and you got a line of people that's 20, that line needs to go all the way down the hallway and you need to spread out.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's, a lot of it's common sense, but the problem is that the people, if the people in leadership positions doesn't say that and it doesn't get out and it doesn't reinforce it in people's minds, then sometimes it's not at the forefront of their thoughts. Uh, that's, yes ma'am, please come to the microphone. Just please, your name and address for the rec. Name and address for the record, please.
That's a first.
My name is Tina Allen and, um, I'm also at 1319 Goodman Street. But, um, so the last, I'd say, two weeks, um, since I'm a very, very busy hairdresser booked, you know, four, five days a week, um, you, you'd be very proud of our county because I have had so many people cancel and they're mostly over 65.
That's what I was hoping you'd say.
And, um, even some of our younger people that are stay home, moms or dads, whatever. Um, but I'm telling you, people are being very smart. Because, well, first of all, I've talked to several hairdressers in our county that are already, um, being super careful. I mean, like I have people, one person in my chair, of course, they wouldn't be there if they were sick or even had any symptoms and I would never do that to my people, no matter what time of year it was. But everybody that has been there, um, have not been sick, had any kind of symptoms. Um, and they, where I work, it's rooms, so you're, you're separated out anyway. There'll be one person in my room at the time and they have waited on the back porch or waited in their car and said, I'll call you. I'll call you when I'm ready for you. So it's not been anything like you would think. I'm not in an open space at all. There's only two on my side. My salon is, is separated out. There's only two on my side, my salon is separated out, and we do have a guy that's essential, he sells CBD on the other side, and he comes when people call needing it. But for the most part, I've had a lot of cancellations, because people are being very cautious. I do have people asking me to come to their home. I don't mind it, because I'm a healthy, very athletic 46-year-old. I don't mind helping people that are in need. Because there are, my mom is a, she'll be 73 years old, still working, healthy woman. She's amazing. And she has people that can't lift their arms over their head. So she's there to help people. But I think we're, our hairdressers are giving, we give a lot, I'll put it that way. And people don't want us to completely shut down, they want us to be there for them. Yeah, there are some that are scared to death, they want to wait until everything is lifted. But for the most part, we've used Lysol, alcohol, because straight alcohol, I've read on this COVID-19, it's quite crazy. It's not alive, it's a dead virus, so you have to let it decay. That's what takes so long. So you have to use alcohol, Lysol, Lysol wipes, wash your hands. I mean, I'm telling, I am giving my clients, you know, as much information as I read. And it's pretty crazy what that virus is. It's crazy. But anyway, I'm very cautious in between clients, I use Lysol on the capes, and then I wash the capes. When I, you know, at the end of the day, I'm being very cautious with my people. So anyway, I just want to let y'all know that everybody that I know of, everybody's being cautious, everybody I've talked to. And then the ones that just don't want to come, that's their discretion, you know, and they'll just call me when they're, when everything's lifted, that's what they told me. "I'll call you when everything's done." So, I mean, it's still hurting our business, because they're canceling, but we want to be able to at least make a little bit of money, so we can pay our bills. So, anyway, I just want to let y'all know that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Allen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would, I appreciate everybody's concern. Mr. Harris, you said it all, you said a mouthful. Mr. Chairman, you said a mouthful. I think that caution, probably the best recipe that we have, being caution. One-on-one, a gathering. My son-in-law, he has a barber shop, and he closes down. I mean, he just, he had six or seven individuals in there the other day, and when I left out, I called him. And of course, Saturday, he came out to our property, and he said, I said, "You're not opening the door?" He said, "No, I'm just being cautious." And because sometimes, the caution people are the ones that, more like a survivor, because you're being cautioned. When you don't care, or you don't understand that this is for real, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, about, I think I care more for the people of this county. I have District Two, but I'm a county commissioner. I care about everybody in this county that I wouldn't want to put anybody in harm's way. I understand that a business, I've talked to a local funeral home director, and he was straight up, he told me, he hoped that it doesn't happen. He said, "Because when you have a funeral, he told the family they can't come, you know, no viewing, they sit in their cars." We're in an epidemic now, that the unknown, as Mr. Chairman said, there's the unknown out there. Mr. Harris, when you said the crystal ball, we tried to pull in there, but we, as leaders of this community, we have to do what's best. And that's try to protect the citizens of this county and other counties around the counties. As I said earlier, I know what the state is doing. At 6 o'clock this morning, coming down I-75, if you're not from Florida, they're turning you around and sending you back out of this state. They're closing the stations down, and they have some forces out there that's making it possible that it doesn't happen. You come into Swanee County, or Hamilton County, off I-75, and you're not in the state of Florida, they turn you around, send you back out. They go down to the next exit, you're going out of here. Sometimes you have to do some things that we've never been in this situation before. And the unknown has just not taken us out, but is making us more cautious of what's going Those figures, as you said, Mr. Harris, they double, and they double, and they double. And we got a worse situation than the three individuals. And my heart go out to those ones, and we just have to be cautious, we have to have a little, just a little fear of the possibility of the unknown. There's more that I can say, but I don't want to take up all the time. And as some of the individuals come, maybe I can think about some more things, but I just like to, I'm from a very, very, I have a very, very large family in this county, and I have that fear of the unknown.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a couple of concerns about enforceability of any type of resolution that we pass, or any decisions that we make. Are we not currently under a social distancing order from the state of Florida? Or is it simply a guideline? That's the first question that I have. If we are currently under an order...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Are you talking about whether law enforcement is an order, it's law versus an order that may say and suggest social distancing, just like what the president has done? It's not a force of law, but is a very strong suggestion. You know, it's an order, but it's not given the authority to be enforced by law enforcement.
I know, the reason why I ask that question is, I know that some states have attached fines to their, to these orders to make them enforceable. But in reality, if we do not have any teeth on an order, then it's going to be extremely difficult for law enforcement to enforce it. They can only go out there and disperse the crowd, but the crowd can turn around and get right back together again, number one.
At least we're trying.
That's where I'm at, that's where I'm getting to the point. If we already are under that current, can't say mandate, but mandate, temporary mandate under emergency declarations, then why do we need to do anything? The sheriff's department already has the authority to do that. That's the question that I need answered. If the sheriff's department already has the power to do that under state guidelines, then we don't, I'm opposed to doing anything in the county.
Why would you be opposed to that?
Because we're already under that. There's no sense in doing something on top of what we already have a mandate to do, they already have a mandate to do. The other problem that I've got is, with enforceability, there are certain businesses that cannot operate, that are considered non-essential, that cannot operate with a six-foot social distancing, such as hair salons. And I have a lady down the street from us that owns a hair salon here in town. She said she's seen people trying to comb hairs, attaching a comb to the end of a broom, which I've heard, yes. And she just suggested it, and it was like, there's nothing you can do, you can't cut hair six foot away. So...
If it was law, we'd all be arrested right here today.
That's right. And I think that's one of the things that we want to maintain, we want to maintain a level of freedom that allows us to be responsible. And here's where I was getting to on this in the first place, is if you don't want government to make decisions for you, make decisions yourself. Be responsible in how you operate. Hair salons, hey, wear masks, do everything that you can do to keep that from happening. Hopefully, that'll turn the numbers, will peak out early, earlier rather than later, and we can get back to normal a lot quicker. I am not opposed to social distancing guidelines, by the way. We have churches that are shut down, which are desperately in need of maintaining their, you know, their prayer services, and stuff like that, because, you know, being a spiritual person, I believe that our best answer is from above and not from here. But we also have a responsibility, and they're taking responsibility for those actions as well, and turning their church services into virtual church services, like we are doing. And so where people can actually be a part of that. There are some businesses that cannot operate that way. And I'd rather see the public take responsibility and not have to put this on the burden, this burden on the shoulders of government to have to make these decisions for us. And that's why I'm not so much, if we're already under an order, let's ride with the order. I would approve a resolution that supports that order, but if it's not enforceable, any more enforceable than it is right now, then...
When you say enforceable, you're talking about fines and penalties? Because I'm not going to do that.
That's exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying is enforceable.
Did you listen to what I said when I made my comments?
Yes, sir, I did.
I said I didn't want to put anybody in jail or fine anybody. All I wanted to do is, if we saw a large crowd, them to ask them politely, without being confrontive or combative, that it's not in the best interest of the county. That's all I asked.
Yes, sir.
I'm not wanting to fine anybody and throw them in jail.
Yes, sir. And if I may, the reason why I brought that up was because you used the words enforceable, the word enforceable. And enforceability means that we have to have some kind of teeth behind it. And if we already have something there...
No, the reason I said that is it gives the sheriff the right to say this to these folks. That's the reason I say that. The sheriff doesn't have any directive right now, to my understanding.
That's, and...
I'm talking about directive from the board, I'm not talking about from the state or from the federal government.
FWC was doing it over the weekend on the water.
Yeah.
I mean, they were out there itching, tucking.
Right.
Yeah. So, and that's why I began this conversation with a question. Do you have the authority, right now, under the state of Florida guidelines, to ask people to disperse?
I mean, just like Commissioner, I mean, the chairman was saying, we do. You know, we've had some issues with, you know, a couple of local bars, and we went up and have them disperse, you know, we're not putting no one in jail, naturally. But on the governor's orders, you know, just like the bars and the restaurants, you know, we had a conference call with Florida Sheriff's Association, and that was one of the questions that was asked. Okay, we go to a restaurant, we go to a bar, after we tell them to close down, and then they're still doing business, what do we do? He says, and the governor, this is his words, he don't want us putting people in jail. What we do is, we go to them, just kindly, you know, say, "Hey, you know, there's a governor's order, you can't operate your business, you got to close down." If they, at that point, refuse, then it's a regulatory thing where they attack their license, you know, they'll, we'll make a report, you know, go to the regulatory bureau, and then they'll, they can pull their license, and then they're out of business altogether. So that's how they're approaching it right now.
So that's for businesses. Does that same order apply to non-business gatherings, such as folks getting out into a local area and just hanging out and talking?
No, there's nothing there, you know. That would become, just like the chairman was saying, we would, you know, we have no problem going to them and say, "Hey, you know, because of this order, what the CDC says about the social distancing and so forth, 10 people, the six feet apart," you know, we would naturally highly recommend it. And, you know, and I think most people, you know, now, you know, realize, hey, this is common sense, you know, let's not, you know, try to prevent the spread of it, and they'll abide by it. Now, yeah, you may have some that kind of balk it, but I think majority of, or what we've seen so far, is that they're all, you know, they're complying with us, just by us, you know, going to them and politely asking them, and they're complying with us.
And that was the only question that I had, Mr. Chairman.
And I think, you know, what we're discussing is great, but I do think, like some of the people here have said, and the sheriff has said, our community's taking this serious.
Yes.
I think, for the most part, 90-plus percent are doing what is right, and trying to be social distancing themselves, and taking themselves out of harm's way. Have you seen, or have you recognized, or any of your staff, a gathering of such that we're talking about, that it would be?
Yeah, there's been a couple of bars, one in the county, one in the city, that they've got some creative ways about them, that they're trying to circumvent this, you know, but here again, we went to them, explained, "This is not going to work." You know, they're just trying to find that loophole, you know, in it, you know. But here again, we went to them and explained to them, "Hey, this is not going to work." And so far, they've been complying with it.
They're just trying to make a living.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Fleming.
Going back to the worship services, my mother be 84 years old, a few more months, and she told me she had been going to church all her life. And we had to make a tough decision, we had to make a decision a couple of weeks ago. When I talked to Mr. Harris this morning, I was headed out to the church. We had a meeting. When it comes to tough decisions, and the best thing that I said was, the most important thing that I said that, not that God understands, but we have to be, as Ms. Allen said, you know, a sick person not going to come up in her beauty salon, knowing that she's, the individual, knowing that they're infected. And I said, "I don't think an individual want to come and spread something and make it worse." But, I said, "We have to do this." You know, we did it last week with the fair, we did it with the internet cafes, ten or more gatherings. And I explained, I told them, I said, "We don't know when we're going to congregate again, you know, it's just up in the air, we'll just go by, you know, we play it by ear." So there's some tough decisions, Mr. Chairman, that we have to make, but it's for the best. And I think, I think the end, the citizens of this county, I think they appreciate some of the decisions that this board made. I just want to be honest and fair. If the governor said, and CDC said, and, you know, 10 out of 5, I just got to trust what they're saying. I think it's being fair to, that we are understanding that, I think, as she said, that this germin, it had to dissipate. So I think we're giving ourselves time that, not spreading, but killing it, letting it die. And I'm just a strong, firm believer in that. Just give ourselves some time.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick statement is, I don't, I'm not proposing, nor would I vote in favor of any type of ordinance, or any type of a resolution, that fine people for gathering, or anything like that. I'm not suggesting that we extend any type of orders to require that in this county. So, and I wasn't accusing, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I was not accusing you of actually saying that. I heard everything that you said, and I took notes on it. I just questioned, number one, the need for it, and then, secondly, I questioned whether or not it would do any good, especially in public. And the public gatherings are the, I would love to see the sheriff be able to go out to public gatherings, if they've got family reunions gathering outside, and, you know, around someplace or something. But if you can't disperse them legally, because you have actually nothing to disperse them with, other than requests of the state and the county, then what's your enforcement mechanism to make sure that they disperse? At that point, we're back down to this one question. Can the people be responsible in their own, in their own minds, in their own actions, to keep this from happening? We've shut down parks, we've done everything that we can to keep some of these public gatherings from happening. But if they go into a parking lot, you've got loitering laws to keep people from gathering in parking lots, you've got all types... You've got all types of things you can use. I, I, I'm just, you know, that's, that's my concern, so.
And that, and that's what we're doing now as well, just like, say, the, you know, the governor's put the, the information out or the declaration on the, on the waterways, you know, the game commission, they're, you know, especially on Swan, you know, Swanee River, you know, there's, there's a lot of people, you know, that, they go out there to the, for their Saturday and Sunday on the weekends, you know, and, and get away and, and then, but, and they all gather up. So now, now they've had this order to where they can, gotta have them disperse there. But, but like I say, most of the ones that we've, that I'm familiar with is when we go out and talk to them, you know, they're, they're being respectful and, and they're heeding our warning and they're, they're, they're breaking up. One more thing, that I got a, a call from the Florida Sheriff's Association on Saturday. You know, we're in, we're in District Two here and, you know, as you probably have heard on the news, they're having a roadblock there on I-10. They haven't done I-75 yet, but they're doing I-95 and they're, you know, stopping all the, all the traffic coming in and, and questioning about, especially the ones from New York, uh, from Louisiana and New York. Now, it's a good possibility they're gonna want some of, some of my guys to help relieve over there on 95, um, which I told them, you know, we could, you know, we get three or four guys up there to go over and, and help them out, which doesn't affect Swanee. Well, I guess it probably might affect Swanee County, cause if they come through from New York, coming up to Swanee County or Louisiana, then, you know, especially on I-10, they'd come right through Swanee County. So anyway, that's, you know, something there that could directly affect Swanee County that we're probably gonna be a part of too, just to give y'all heads up on that.
I got a question real quick for the board. Since our parks and things have been closed in the county, our rec department and things, are, are y'all fine with the springs being open, those parks being open? Is it anything that's any concern? Do you think there's, just questions or comments, I'm just putting it out there to discuss it.
Right now, I believe the, so most of them are closed due to the flooding, right?
Currently, all the parks are open. Town of Branford's parks are closed.
They're, they're open, but there, there's no organized.
Organized.
Organized, yes.
And what we're seeing in the parks currently is people are buying, buying by the distancing for the most part. We're monitoring that. Heritage Park's probably the business one. We do have Royal, we were closed because of flooding. However, people still gathering, not quite as much as past weekend, but they're still gathering. And, I'm trying to say this the right way, you know how tactful I am sometimes? When you've got parents with you, you follow the rules. And when you don't, no matter what age you are, sometimes you don't.
When they're, when you say they're gathering, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
When you say they're gathering, are they gathering in the closed parks?
Yes.
Don't we have gates or?
Yes.
So they're walking in? Is there anything that we can do from a law enforcement standpoint to keep that from happening when we have a closed park? And that would be directed at you or the sheriff? That's what I believe, it would be a trespass.
It's a trespass.
So there's a, we already have an enforceable.
That gets tricky though, if they're accessing from the river, coming into the springs, that doesn't become trespassing, that's inevitable waters.
Depending on whether or not you put signs on the riverside, which is pretty easy to do.
But they're coming the other way mainly, they're not, the, the river is up into the springs, so they're not going for the.
They're coming from the land side anyway.
And I'm not suggesting that we, we shut all of our, all of our parks down. I, I'm suggesting that we shut down our pavilions, so they can't gather in larger, in, in larger.
All, all the rentals have been shut down. The rec board, the rec board has moved forward with shutting down the rentals. There's no new rentals of any of the facilities, but we, the rec board left, the parks open, but not for any organized sport. All baseball, softball has been shut down and we left the springs open. Only reason they're closed right now is due to the flooding. With the provision that we would readdress it as things progressed.
Right.
With the social distancing issue, probably the spring staying closed is probably the right thing to do.
As long as the boat ramps remain open.
They are, except for the one at Royal, which is attached to the spring.
And I'll talk to the town of Branford about Ivy Park, cause they've shut it all down.
But as the water's receding, I mean, you would need direction if the, if the board so chooses to not open them back up when it's not a flooding issue.
Right.
Is kind of the question I was getting at, fellas. And I don't, I mean, I don't mean to create problems, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get us through this thing.
I mean, we can make that decision. The rec board left that to Greg and his staff on moving forward so that they, we didn't have to meet on a regular basis on whether they thought it was, needed to be closed or not closed. So, I mean, we can make that decision or they can continue to monitor it and make it however y'all wanna do it.
In fairness to the public, what we're seeing is people are beginning to get it.
Sure.
But at the same time, you know, you know, we're not law enforcement, you know, we, I will say things, I don't expect some other staff to say what I would say, but I'm okay with that.
There, I mean, there again, just talking to y'all here on the board, that's kind of where the, where my social distancing idea was coming from.
I was gonna say, so that's not following the guidelines of social distancing and it's nothing unusual to keep those closed, honestly. I mean, I see and, and read up and down the river, Hart Springs closed, Fanna Springs closed, I mean, so, us keeping those closed at this time, I, I don't foresee an issue with that.
The only thing, I, the only phone calls I've gotten over the last week or so has not been the Royal Spring closure, but the Royal Spring boat ramp being closed. And it's largely been the residents in that area that utilize that boat ramp, got places on the river, getting their boats in and out.
The way, the way that works on a closed boat ramp, law enforcement has the combination, if they call the office, we will give them the combination for something that makes sense. Even, even in normal times, if we close in the evening, have a contractor close in the evening, if we know that somebody's going fishing, they can call the office, say, hey, I'm gonna be out late, you know, we'll give them the combination so they can get out. But the reason we close them is so that, um, a couple of things happens, especially during flooding times, boat traffic, people just shopping, looking, doing whatever they're doing, mischief stuff, or causing problems for our landowners along the river with erosion and whatever, that's what we're trying to prevent. The, the homeowner that needs to get his boat out, needs to have access, go see it, we wanna work with them to make sure they have access to do that. In the evening, when we shut it down, it's a gathering point if we don't close it down. It's, so.
Well, that was pretty much the phone calls that I had, that they had the combo, they were needing to get access to their property, just wanted to make sure they could go in and weren't gonna get in trouble.
I mean, I'm, I'm pulled both ways on this. You know, I mean, people are confined to their homes and they would like to go to the springs when the water's down, to where they could swim or whatever with their kids. I mean, I, you know, do we, as the river falls, do we let it be open and, and have the sheriff go by there and just check if everybody's kind of doing right or do you?
That's, that's kind of where I'm leaning at with it, and I swear to rec board was that, is kind of give people an out on, uh, you know, if, if they are confined to their homes and they got the parks throughout the community, they're open space, they're large areas, they can get out, move around and not be confined up amongst one another.
But that's, my question is though, can the, will, can and will the sheriff be able to do that if we don't have an order in place is my, is, is kind of my thoughts. There again, just asking kindly, when you go to talk to these folks on the side of, I understand, I want everybody to know here today, I understand 90% of the people in this county's doing the right thing. The problem is with government is you got 10% that you got to look out for, that will not use common sense and wants to defy the system and go against you every step of the way. That 10% is the ones that's gonna spread what we're trying not to spread. That's why, that's the only reason I'm up here, trying to figure out some guidelines that are reasonable, that we can use moving forward. I'm even for doing it on a week-to-week basis. If we go a week and things get a lot better, we can lift these orders. If we go a week and they get worse, we can look back and say, you know what? Last week, we tried to do something. We done something to help this. That's, that's what I'm fighting for, fellas, it's, uh, nothing, nothing is personal. But I mean, it's close to my heart. I, I can't lay down at night and knowing that I didn't do my job up here and I let one person get this and die. I, I can't do that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm gonna have to leave, cause I've got an appointment, but, but I'd like to say something real quick. And I'm hope, I really hope that I'm wrong. But the tough decisions are gonna be easier to make if the numbers climb.
Sure.
See, the problem with not having a crystal ball, we think about a crystal ball as it might enable us to look forward. But the problem is you can't look backward. The difficulty Mr. Waldron's struggling with right now is when you start investigating, and I see all of those reports that come from Tallahassee say that all of these cases they're trying to investigate, figure out, one, how they, how they contracted the virus, but two, how many people they came into contact with over the last 14 days?
Exactly.
How many people did each of you contact or come into contact with in the last 14 days? Can you figure that out? And if you were asymptomatic, but you were carrying it, if somebody else picked it up, then how many people did they communicate with in the last 14 days? That's what's difficult. So the decisions could get real difficult. Right now, you're saying everything that everyone in New York and Washington said, well, we don't wanna shut anyone down right now. We're all about maximum freedom and moving about and not interfering with anyone's business. But if you do a search right now, you're gonna find that lots of communities across the state have shut down hair salons and nail salons and all of these businesses that have zero distancing. Not because they wanted to, not because they don't want those businesses to thrive, not because they can't have empathy over businesses that are struggling trying to make a mortgage payment, but because they finally got to the point where they realized that they absolutely had to do everything that they could to try to stop the spread of the disease. So I think that everything that you're saying is spot on right now. My prayer is that we don't have to make tough decisions. My prayer is that we don't have any additional cases. My prayer is that two days from now, we haven't doubled the cases in this county and every two days thereafter, like so many other communities that have already experienced this before us. That's my prayer. The other prayer that I have every evening is that I'm real thankful I'm not sitting in your seat. I'd rather sit over here. Anyway, blessings to everyone. I'm gonna continue praying. Right now, I've got to go, I've got an appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. As we're, as we're thinking about these things for a minute, I've asked Mr. Marshall Beck to come this morning. Marshall, if you could come up, just got a couple of quick questions for you. He is the famous manager of Busy Bee, the biggest auto travel plaza or the, or the favorite one in the country.
Well, we would hope so.
Marshall, I just, and maybe you have some things you'd like to add that might help us with the things we're thinking about. I just wanna ask you how things are going out there, how far is social distancing that you're seeing far as traveling public coming through? I mean, are, are you happy? Is there things that could be done better? Is there things we can learn from? I mean, this is.
Well, and thank you guys for having me to start with and, and thank, thank to all the people that's doing their best out there to, to make this thing go as smooth as it will, okay? Some things that we've done in our operation out there, of course, our business is off 55, 60%, okay? Out, out at the travel center out there. In, in, in our rule stores, we're doing fine, you know? So we've, we've got plenty of help on hand now to do a lot of cleaning, okay? So, so our gold out there and, and what we're doing to try to help things out there is we, we have a log every 15 minutes, we're rubbing everything that's a public could touch, anything that they could touch. It don't matter what it is, from shelving to whatever. And we use correct sanitizing.
About gas pumps.
Gas pumps, gas pumps is every 15 minutes. We clean the gas pumps every 15 minutes and we have a sign on there stating, if you want rubber gloves to pump your gas or to use in our facility, we have it at the cash registers. So they're able to come in and get rubber gloves if they want to. I can't put them at the pumps, cause people are stealing them, okay?
Absolutely.
So, 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 so anyway, but we are, if, if, if you was ever just right out there right now, you'll see we're way off, but you'll see somebody, two to three people with gloves on, rags in their hands, sanitizer, cleaning out operation. That's as clean as that place has ever been, you guys. I mean, I hate to say that, but it is, it's as clean as it's ever been out there. And I, I feel comfortable going in there myself, walking through the, my facility. As far as, is, is the, is the social, is, is distancing, we don't have many customers right now, guys, at one time, okay? So it's, it's like a ghost town inside there. Like I said, it's off 60% probably. And we're used to packing people in there, but now, we don't wanna pack people in there, okay? But we wanna stay open for the public. The trucking, the trucking industry of it is up, that's the one thing that's holding us together out there is, there's a lot of stuff moving throughout the communities. And I think some, some places have shut drivers down from coming in, uh, they won't even let them walk through the drive-through and get a, a sandwich or something. So, um, we have kept it open to our drivers and we've kept our showers open to the drivers, but we sanitize, guys. It's like, it's like you've never seen. When, when one person walks in, we sanitize behind them and then it's open for the next person. We're fixing to put up the, if you've been to Lowe's lately, they got these plastic, these dividers in front of the cashiers that allows somebody not to cough on them or sneeze on them or something, plexiglass thing. We've got those ordered, there should be in any day right now, we're gonna put those up. But, um, I, I just, all I can say is we're doing everything in our power, uh, even at our office, we have separated in our offices, uh, over in Lake City and everything. And every location that we have has the same stuff to work with, whether it's rule stores or, or, or travel centers or truck stops. But all of our locations on the interstates are completely down 50%. So people are listening out there. You may have that 10% you say are not listening, so what we're having to do on our end is continue to sanitize, that hopefully we can keep this thing down and, um, keep, right, right now, we've had none of our employees had even, any, no symptoms, no fevers, no nothing. So, you know, knock on wood that we don't have any of that happen to our people out there. And our people are comfortable working in there, they're, they're comfortable, they're comfortable coming to work every day.
I, I really appreciate you coming and I will preface this by saying, I've had, I've not actually spoke personally to, to Marshall, but I've known from the past that they run a first-class operation and I was trying to get some, I wanted to get some input from him, as some of these other gas stations, I'm concerned, may not be doing what he's doing and if there's some way we could get word to them, because if we got people traveling the interstate system, they're stopping and using a gas pump and happen to have that and then one of our residents stops there and gets gas, then here again, we have it right back on us. There's a lot of things going on here, folks, and I, I just, I, I appreciate you coming. I mean, there's things you've said right there that I didn't even think about or, but it.
And, you know, there's no way to stay in, in front of every bit of it, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
But, but that, I've got so many people that don't have anything to do out there, that's what they're doing now, is just cleaning. They're, they're, they're on them pumps. If you'll go out there, you'll see a guy out there spraying them pump panels down and spraying all that stuff down. And listen, honest to gosh, if, if you're not comfortable, we got gloves.
Absolutely.
You know, if you wanna go through my whole store with gloves on, I don't care, you, you know what I mean? We did pull all the tables, there's no, there's no chairs or nothing, there's no, they can't sit down in a restaurant or do anything, you can go through the drive-through or, or you can walk up to the counter, but there is, there is six-foot, uh, intervals right there to where we want you to stay, you know what I mean? So we're doing everything in our power to make this thing work, uh, and hopefully, hopefully it continues like that. We don't wanna shut things down, you know, if, if, if it comes to it and the, and the governor says shut down, we'll have to shut down, but I don't think that's gonna happen right now, cause we gotta stay open.
Right.
So we can get supplies up and down the highways, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
But we got our people, we're, we're, we're concerned about our people, just like we're concerned, concerned about everybody else. We want them to be safe in our atmosphere out there. So we're doing everything in our power and I'm telling you, it's clean out there, guys, okay?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Beck or comments?
Just say that, I appreciate all that you do. I mean, this is the type of responsibility, uh, responsible behavior that all of us, business owners or not.
Yes, sir.
Need to.
Well, we've always been the one to step out and, and try to step out and be beyond other people, that's what we set our, our Busy Bee brand on, is, you know, clean, happy, always full, and that's the way we are, okay, guys?
And, and same goes for you guys. I appreciate all that you do in the hair salons, be able to keep them open. My dad needs a haircut and he just won't go, so.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank, thank you guys for having us.
Before you leave.
Yes, sir.
I would like to say that, you know, in my travel, day and night coming through, I've been to Bee. It's a clean facility, and I have noticed a drop-off, you know, in my travel going back to work. I see businesses high there going, and this morning when I came through, I saw, I used to count the cars that be in there, tried to, but it has been a quick...
It's easy to get gasoline out there now, but it used to not be so easy. But you can pull up any pump you want to right now. But, you know, hopefully, this is not going to last forever. And thank God the rural stores is keeping us above float. And we got the same situation in them stores. Sanitation, clean, you know? So if there's anything we can ever help you guys with, just let us know, and thank y'all for what you guys are doing. My goodness, I'd hate to be on that board right now, guys, but thank y'all for what y'all doing, okay?
You're helping us right now by giving us ideas and...
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question for him. Y'all supply chain, though? You're not seeing interruption in that at all?
Well, of course, there's been interruption on toilet paper and hand sanitizer and stuff. But I tell you what, there is, we did get word that Propping Gamble's shutting down, and RJ Reynolds, Autrea, and all of them shut down for a couple of weeks and all. So don't know what the demand's going to be there. Don't know if we're going to be running out of, we have run out of toilet paper. We have started to get a little bit in. But the hand sanitizer stuff, I've got stuff, guys, to let everybody know. I've got it rolling in this week out there, next week, and the following week. So I'm going to have plenty of hand sanitizer hopefully, okay? But I've had to order that stuff way ahead, and it's took four weeks to get it here, you know? So, but as far as everything else, right now, we're not seeing an interruption in my side of it because we're travel centers and convenience stores. We're not grocery stores and big shopping centers like that. So I still have product on my shelves right now, and I have my stores ordering extra, you know, just in case they go to that dollar store and can't get green beans. You can come over to my place and kind of get green beans. Right now, we have no interruption on, there's sure not no interruption on fuel, guys. There's more fuel than you've ever seen right now. As y'all can see at the gas pumps, the prices, you know what I mean? So, but anyway, right now, I've had no interruption as far as inside the stores. We're stocked pretty good right now. Only thing would be hand sanitizer. But I'll have that in this week. If people are listening right now, I'll be getting some of that in this week, next week, and the following week.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Appreciate you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Mr. Waldron.
Chairman, if I could, just to impress upon you how quickly things change in the state. Just while we're here in our meeting today, the new numbers have come out for the state, and I just wanted to make sure that we have accurate information that goes out to the public. Total confirmed cases in the state of Florida are 5,473, which is an increase of 523 cases since I spoke about an hour ago. There are 62 deaths now in the state of Florida. In Swanee County, we have three confirmed cases of COVID. I would conclude my remarks by just reminding you of the three Cs to COVID-19. First C is caution. We all need to be cautious in our actions. The second C is concern. We need to all be concerned for each other and to look out for each other. And the third C is to practice common sense approach to what we do. And I applaud the board for your efforts in looking at this. And I think as a community, if we all cooperate with each other, we can contain COVID-19 in Swanee County. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Waldron. Any comments from the board?
I got a question, but from Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
You said that y'all got an order this morning at 6:00.
At 6:00, well, on our email.
And the only reason I bring that up is I had a text message with a video yesterday where we had five charter buses pull in and unload in Swanee County, and I didn't know.
Well, it started at 6:00 this morning.
This was yesterday.
Yeah, it started at 6:00 this morning, Dan.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, sir.
So those six buses pulled into our location out there.
I wasn't going to name them.
Well, it doesn't matter. It's going to get out anyway. But anyway, we done everything in our power to not let them put so many in the store at one time, okay? Now, keep in mind, these, all these buses has been quarantined for 14 days. All the people on them buses, okay? That's that come into there. So you've got to think about the bus driver letting them onto the bus. You've got to think about the people that allowed them to get onto that bus. They were cleared of everything for 14 days, okay? So we done everything in our power to keep them out of there. And, I mean, they fought our people like you wouldn't believe. So we tried to take other forces in, but by rights, they had no rights to run them out of our locations, you know what I mean? So this morning, what we done, we called all the bus lines, okay? No more. No more bus lines right now, okay? And I thought that was all shut down to start with because we hadn't had buses in three weeks. We hadn't had a bus pull in our parking lot in three weeks. But this pulled in last night, and this was quarantine, a bunch of people that has been quarantined for 14 days. Now, I know how my employees felt on this matter, okay? And, golly, they had to deal with this last night, you know what I mean? But if I had a bus pull in there, the only reason why I'd want that bus to come into my location, that it has been quarantined for 14 days. And there's been no people with viruses, no people with fevers, no people with any kind of thing like that. We would not allow them to get on them buses, okay? But I want to let y'all know that we have called all bus lines, and there'd be no more buses coming into our operation, okay? So I know that's what you've heard this morning, and I've been dealing with that all night also. And it was a situation we don't want to be into, and I didn't think we would ever be into that right now. But by golly, they pulled in there last night.
Where were they coming from?
It's off of Cruz.
This is exactly what I've been talking about this whole morning. I mean, it just seems to me like if we had that order in place, that he could have got some help from the Sheriff's Department if he needed it. I mean, but...
Well, Mr. Chairman, back to the question with Mr. Gamble, Commissioner Gamble. I think this is the first phase of it. Probably because the trucks are allowed to come in, but it's car traffic, and they're catching them, you know, just coming into Florida on the southbound side. If you're not from Florida, you're getting that Wax Springs exit, you're getting out of here. I think the governor is not playing. I think this is the first phase of it. Who knows by...
But I think the government is all on top of this to start with. These people were quarantined for 14 days, okay? And so they were cured. I'm sure that there was cases on there that they couldn't load on the bus. I'm sure there's people that was on that thing that was quarantined that was not labeled to get on the bus after 14 days, you know what I mean? So 14 days, everybody says you're quarantined for 14 days and you're clear, okay? So all these people were quarantined for 14 days. Now, I didn't like it. It made my gut fall down. But by the time they got there, it done happened. It done happened. They done got off and come in, you know what I mean? So there was nothing we could do to stop them. They wouldn't even stop them. We couldn't even get the bus drivers to stop them, you know what I mean? So, but anyway, with that, we have sanitized, we have cleaned since then. We have, and you know, if it's in the air, it only lasts three hours in the air, okay? So we kind of shut things down out there for a few hours, okay? To get all cleaned up and get it all taken care of. So I want to let y'all know it's still safe out there. We've got it all taken care of. It's out of there. Just hopefully, that it wasn't around any of my employees, you know what I'm saying? But once again, it was a 14-day quarantine. All these people were cleared.
Mr. Waldron, he's left, haven't he?
Thank you so much.
Well, I didn't bring that up to throw you out there, but I was just bringing it up to make the point that we take all these measures, and you still can't help what comes down that interstate. And there's nothing you can do when somebody pulls up and pulls in. I mean, it's kind of hard on any facility. Well, that's a good thing to know.
Yep. Ms. Allen.
I want to say something real quick. I know Mr. Waldron didn't say anything about this, but I have a client that works in banking. And she said that it's very hard to mess with money with gloves because her till will be down. But y'all just need to know that on money, it stays on the money for 90-something hours. So if y'all mess with money, it don't matter who it is. Money goes from one county to another county. You need to really wash your hands because it's very dirty. I mean, it stays on that probably longer than wood. So I just want to let y'all know that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is, I mean, these, everything that's being talked about, that's why we're here, is to bring and talk about these things and things that we haven't talked about or thought about. I mean, there's numerous things I learned this morning, very informative, and I appreciate everybody. I would like to clear up the one thing about the springs. Is there any direction we want to take or give on that? I mean, would we like to just leave them open and ask our sheriff? Or do you want to leave them locked? I just want to be clear with the public. I don't want there to be half and half.
If the board's fine with it, I would like just to continue to follow the recommendation from the rec board and allow them to stay open with rec staff continuing to monitor the situation and make decisions as they feel necessary, if Greg's still okay with that.
Currently, they're closed now. But we probably leave them closed for the rivers drop anyway. I think the important thing is making sure law enforcement has the tools that they need to, you know, disperse and not even get them spread apart, you know?
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Just on the heels of that, Sheriff, do you have the staff in place? Just say the next time we meet, next seven days, we were, to ask you to police that?
Yeah, right now, we do because, you know, right now, schools are closed. You know, we've got to have, you know, two, three officers at the schools because they're, you know, they're doing the meals. And then they want to help with the buses when they make their rounds. But so I do, unfortunately, I do have some extra staff from the schools since they're closed down right now. So I'll be able to do it. And plus, even if I did, you know, I can get the zone guys that these springs are in to go by and check them out so often.
And you have the ability to go out in a social setting? And if they were out there just swimming out there, you had a bunch of kids swimming in the spring altogether, confined, or you have the ability to go out there and separate them?
Well, I mean, if the springs are closed, then, you know, it falls under that trespasser rule, you know?
Given the springs, within the next week or two before we make any more decisions, the waters come down and they reopen the springs.
Okay, to go, to monitor them, you say?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, no problem. You know, however long, whatever y'all want to do, you know, I'll make sure we have the necessary manpower to go out there and check these springs, you know, however often we can. No problem there.
And as far as their closure, you are enforcing trespass?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah. If they're closed, you know, just like any business, if they're closed and don't want the public in there, you know, then, you know, at that point in time, they're trespassing, yes, sir.
Was you, did you ask too, that did he have the authority at this point in time without any type of order to disperse them?
That's what I asked, but I didn't...
Well, I mean, well, the only way we would have would be if they was closed. You know, if the springs are closed, and then people go, they walk through the gate or roll around the gate, then at that point in time, they're trespassing.
Also, if it, but if it's open?
Yeah, and if it's open, you know, then, yeah, we'd have an issue there as far as, hey, you can't come to the springs unless we have some type of governor's order or your order saying, hey, you can't come here because of, you know, whatever order y'all administer.
Let me rephrase that question. Do you feel comfortable with any type of order, federal, state, in place at this time to disperse any crowds that you see that needs to be dispersed? Do you feel comfortable without something else from us as a county?
Well, the...
Would you feel more comfortable?
Well, I mean, yeah, nationally, if we had something, we'd have a little more teeth into it, you know? Right now, the only thing that we can do is what the CDC recommends. Hey, we go up to the springs, and there's a group of 25 people there all partying there together. You know, we can say, hey, guys, you know, this is because of the COVID-19. You have to be six feet apart, and there will be 10 people. Y'all, you need to comply. They can either comply, or they can, you know, once we leave, they can all gather back together. And so at that point in time, we really don't have anything other than just, you know, hope they have enough common sense to heed our warning and go. If we had something from y'all, now, actually, that would give us a little more teeth to do it. You know, hey, if you don't do it, then this is what's going to happen. You know, just like, you know, just like the trespass, you know? We can go out there, you know, and, you know, it's, and here again, we don't want to go around and put people in jail because they're trying to have a good time or go to the springs or get out there and, you know, enjoy life. But, you know, if they force their hand, then at that point in time, we'd have something to fall back on and say, okay, well, if you don't, this is what happens, and then, you know, then we'd have to show them our hand, say, okay, you know, come with us.
So what you're saying is if an order from the board without a penalty or a fine or some kind of repercussion is no better than what you already have?
Yeah, it's better than we have, you know? Like, just like I say, you know, here again, we're not, I'm not in the business of putting people in jail because, you know, of them trying to go up to springs and swim and have a good time. But here again, just like Commissioner, I mean, the chairman said, you got that 10% that gives you a hard time, and that's where you need the little bit of teeth there to say, hey, okay, this is what's going to happen. You know, right now, all the thing we can do is ask them and be nice and say, hey, please do this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question, would this, would any order from us extend to private property? Someone's gathering in their front yard, have a bunch of people out there in their front yard with a birthday party. Would you have the authority, would this give you the authority to disperse that crowd?
I'd have, that might be a question for Jimmy Privat there, the attorney. But I wouldn't think so. I think that'd have to be some type of a, you know, we could go to a private property and say, hey, guys, you know, you realize that you're over 10 and you're, you know, you're not going to the guidelines and so forth? But I don't think that we can go up on someone unless attorney can tell them to stop there for a little.
Once you have the declared state of emergency, 250, 250 will give you that authority. Did that come in microphone?
I think so. I don't know. I didn't hear it, but...
Okay, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Scott.
I don't think I answered Mr. Gamble's question. But yes, great board or staff can make that decision about opening the springs without any headache.
I would, and we're meeting weekly right now, so I would just like to, you know, address and comments this weekly moving forward. I just think not one size fits all for six months. Continue to talk, monitor it, and if we have different things come up that's a problem, then we address it.
And I agree with that. I think all these discussions need to be weekly discussed.
Exactly. I mean, it does. And if we get something major, I want to let the board know if we get something major. I mean, any one of y'all have questions or concerns, and we need to meet sooner? All it takes is a phone call. Respect any one of y'all's decision that we need a request to meet. We'll make it happen, just that fast.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One thing let me mention, we've been talking about springs a lot. But the playground is two or another focal point, which right now, everything is okay. But at whatever point we deem that they're gathering too much, we may shut them down also, so.
I think the board puts that authority in your hands.
Oh, in your hands.
And that's what the rec board had decided because they deal with it on a day-to-day basis, and they see what's going on. So we left that at his staff's recommendation.
I mean, we're 100% good with that, I believe.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, real quick, Greg, go back to springs for a second. Do you anticipate with the waters receding, given that we, let's just say, we don't get any more rain, with the receding of the rivers, how long would it be before they would typically be reopened for flood reasons?
Looking at Friday, I was looking at the numbers, or one day recently, and the numbers are, the levels are dropping slowly. And then I went through Branford on Friday, and it didn't like that changed hardly at all. So we monitor Water Management District's website daily, to look at the river heights, to look at trends. But to reach out, how many weeks or days that's going to be at, I'm not sure. And we've got more rain coming, hopefully, pray that we've got some rain coming.
Do you anticipate it being reopened before next week?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to get the pleasure of the board, at this point in time, we want to move forward like we are. No one wants any type of social distancing order at this time? Is that feeling that we have here?
I don't know so much as an order, but I mean, obviously, I think the sheriff just stepped outside. But, I mean, he has the direction. He has the authority, according to our council, to, if his deputies see that, he has no issue pulling in and giving that advice. I would encourage him to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I would say anything on county public property, I think that that's a given. We ought not to let any of these, any of our county property that we maintain, we shouldn't be, you know, we should be able to order the social distancing and keep that in place. However, I, you know, as far as private property is concerned, you know, business property, they have the ability to hit them for loitering. They have the ability even hit them for trespassing if they need to. So there's some things out there on the books already. So that was why I asked about the private property issue, because somebody's front yard, birthday parties, you know, stuff like that.
Thank you, sir. So the, Mr. Privat, do we need to have a motion on extending this?
That was part of the consent.
Okay.
I just stuck it over there for you to...
Okay, so it was covered in the consent?
Put it over there without an explanation.
You're right. Item number three, just extending the decorated state of emergency is what I'm referring to. Any, let's see, Mr. Privat, you got anything else? Closing comments?